Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, September 5th at exactly 6:00 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
Councilmember Canning?
Here.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor Canning.
That works too. Here, thank you. Please all stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We did have a closed session last Tuesday at 5:30, which was a noticed event, publicly noticed event, and it was regarding potential litigation relating to a property matter. There is no reportable action at this time, so thank you. Now, open oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-4.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes maximum so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under oral communication? Please make your way to the podium. Should you so choose, share with us your name and your address and limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vidi Agapoff. I live at 2010 High Rock Drive in Calistoga. And tonight, I'm here to show my support to all the DACA and the Dreamers. Immigration is a human issue fundamentally about opportunity. People come into the US to improve themselves and the lives that they have. The hard work and contributions of immigrants is what makes America so beautiful. This morning's decision to end the DACA program is a, an attack on education, but the fight will continue. A todos los Dreamers, a los DACA's, les digo que la lucha sigue, los sueños siguen para adelante. And I ask the council to please show your support because this community, there are a lot of people in this community that depend on DACA. There are a lot of Dreamers. I was once myself a Dreamer, and now I'm on the other side, so I stand united with them, and the fight's not over. Thank you.
Very, thank you very much for your comments, and I know a lot of us share that sentiment. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any item that is either on the consent calendar or not on the agenda? Now is your opportunity. All right, I will close oral communication and seek adoption of the meeting agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
Don't move.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Barnes. I will give the second to Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Um, yes, I want to second the comments that we have from Vidi. I will want to share with you that about 29 years ago, I started a journey with my five-year-old daughter then, to come to the land of freedom and opportunity. At the same time, many parents did the same thing with their young kids. We crossed the border, and since then, we have been working very, very hard to provide our kids with education and a better life. We are not criminals. Many of those kids are confronting now the hay and having been betrayed by a system that asked them to come out of the shadow. In Napa Valley, since 2013, 429 applications have been filled, and 140 of them are between Santa Elena and the Calistoga area. These kids who apply for this program have proved that they are good kids. They are hard workers, they have full-time jobs, they attending a local college, they're getting a degree, and they are contributing to our economy and society. This is very personal to me, as I see very close. Many of these kids are our own residents. I know a lot of them since they were little kids. Here in Calistoga, they work in our business, wineries, et cetera, and they attend our community college. And all the hard work these individuals put into our community pays back and make it stronger. It's very sad and hard for me to hear the voices of the parents that I personally encouraged them to apply for this program, crying on the phone and asking me, "What are we gonna do now?" Because we don't know what the future holds for them. I can simply say that all these Dreamers are committed Americans. America made a promise to them, and a truly great community and country keeps its commitment. What happened today is not what represents this country. We will continue this fight for our kids. La lucha continua y si se puede. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
Uh, yes, my thoughts are exactly the same as Iris and Vidi. I sit here tonight with a heavy heart, extremely heavy. Both of my great-grandfathers were immigrants, one from Germany, one from Ireland. I fought for this country, and tonight I stood up and pledged allegiance once more to it. I believe in this country with all my heart, every fiber of my being. But what happened in Washington today is not American. It is un-American. It is a disgrace. Personally, there is absolutely nothing I can do other than voice my sentiments, march in a rally, write letters, talk to my congressman, but I can't really do anything. This body as a whole cannot do anything. But Iris, we support you. I support you. I love you 100 percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
I'll add my support to Iris. And the situation, I can't imagine being in place where a number of our residents are right now. I do know that the council has something we might be able to do, and that revolves around the funding that we give for legal services. And one of the things in that contract is to support people for pursuing their citizenship and like that. And if these recent actions from Washington make funding for that more acute, then if that agency will come back to this council, I'm sure that we would add whatever funding that we can.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
I support the sentiments of the other council members that have already been expressed.
Thank you. DACA was obviously an unfortunate situation this morning. As Iris and Vidi have mentioned, there are several members of our community who are going to be, are being impacted by We'll be there for them and do what we can as best we can. My recommendation to anyone in this situation who's being impacted by this is, we are very fortunate in this small community to have a very, very capable and resourceful Up Valley Family Center who does a tremendous amount of work to support all immigration matters. And to Councilmember Kraus's point, we fund that currently, and should there be more funding required, they should come ask. But please, your friends, your neighbors, anyone you know who is in need of this type of support, Up Valley Family Center is the place to go. And remember, these aren't people out in the distance. These are people that we live next to, people we work next to, people who are friends of our children, so we need to be aware of that. And we're here, to the limited scope that we can, we will impact this decision within our own local community. A couple of other matters needing to be addressed. We did come out of a very significant heat situation. I do want to thank especially for the folks who watch at home, many who are homebound. I want to thank you for your efforts to go out and check on your neighbors. I know there was quite a bit of that, to make sure everyone was okay. And I know that our emergency services were taking care of requests that were made of them throughout the weekend, throughout the very long heat period. So, thank you to all for that. Also wanted to remind everyone that there will be a significant road closure this coming weekend, specifically on September 10th, which is the harvest table. And I'm calling it significant for the simple reason that our normal in-town bypass road, Berry Street, is currently closed because of bridge repair. So, that will be something everyone's going to need to be aware of. It has been in the papers. Also, every residence in the City of Calistoga is getting a bilingual reminder tomorrow. It's either arriving to their address tomorrow or on Thursday, but through the help and partnership with the city, every single household will receive this just as an added reminder that on September 10th, the only way to cross town is at Dunwoy or Tubbs. Or you are welcome to ride your bicycle or walk across Berry Street Pedestrian Bridge or Lincoln Avenue. But during the period of the road closure, the only way around is a long detour to get to see the countryside of Napa. I should say, Calistoga, non-city limits.
That's it. City Manager's Report. City Manager Feek?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Proclamations, presentations, and awards. The first presentation is a proclamation to the Native Daughters of the Golden West, Calistoga Parlor Number 145 honoring California Admissions Day. And nobody from the Native Daughter, so I will read it very quickly. Whereas in 1886, the Native Daughters of the Golden West was established as a fraternal and patriotic organization founded on the principles of love of home, devotion to the flag, veneration of the pioneers, and faith in the existence of God. And whereas the Native Daughters of the Golden West contribute to many charitable projects including California Lighthouse Preservation, California Mission Restoration, Education and Scholarships, Environmental Issues, Pioneer Roster, and Native Daughters of the Golden West Archives. And whereas the Native Daughters of the Golden West is one of the oldest associations with approximately 5,000 diverse Californian-born leaders who preserve California's history. Whereas Calistoga Parlor Number 145 was founded 112 years ago on April 15th, 1905, and currently has 68 members. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Calistoga hereby declares September 9th, 2017, to be Calistoga Parlor Number 145 of the Native Daughters of the Golden West Day in conjunction with California Admission Day, signed and sealed this 5th day of September in the year 2017. So Kathy, I'm sure you'll get this to the appropriate folks there. And there's an action, I believe, later on the agenda that will allow them to fly their flag over Calistoga that week, if I have that correctly. Number two on your agenda, we're moving to September 19th, and that was a service recognition award to Udi Galvan Ortega. We're going to move that till September. Next, we have a presentation of a service award to Senior Maintenance Technician Travis Bounsell, for 15 years of service to the Calistoga Public Works Department. Travis is not able to be here with us tonight, but I believe Mike Kern will take this. And it's a service award presented to Travis Bounsell, Public Works Department Senior Maintenance Technician from 2012 to 2017, with sincere appreciation for your 15 years of dedicated service to the City of Calistoga, presented by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Calistoga. Travis, if you're watching this recording tomorrow, thank you for all of your service. And Mike, I'm sure you'll make sure he gets this. Do you feel compelled to come get it now?
Probably.
So you can hand over the handshake.
Travis couldn't be here this evening. He's coaching his son's football team.
Very good.
My first. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a report from Councilmember Lopez Ortega regarding the League of Cities Conference in Monterey that was recently attended. Councilmember Lopez Ortega, all yours.
Thank you. So I will try to do this very briefly. As a council member, I think, and I have, I feel the responsibility to report to the council and to the public when I attend a conference. And I did attend the mayor and council members in June '28 and '29. And, some of the topics that we have, it was the first one, the general session was understanding the angry borders, what happened in 2016, and what that means going forward. We had a discussion about, you know, how our communities and our citizens, they got divided after these elections, and how as a council members and political leaders, we can bring our communities together and keep working together as we're moving forward. The second one was student success provides the building blocks for thriving communities. And that one was about how as city leaders, we can work together with the school district to provide a healthy environment and a good community for our students to be successful, and, you know, and later they can bring back to our community. The other one, it was the city manager and city council relations. Luckily, in our community, we don't have problems so much with outlier city council members.
You can ask the city manager if he feels the same way.
But I think we are working very well, you know, and this one was about how to build our relations and have an open communication among the council members and the city manager. And the last one was successful strategic planning for councils. We had to set up our priorities and have that in our year plan, you know. And also, one of the things that it was interesting to me is how we can get involved, the community. For example, when we're planning something, if we can have more open forums, and so the community can come and put their output there, and bring their ideas. And the other session that I attend, I attend was the Advanced Leadership Workshop. That was very intense ones. That was about city finances, what you need to know. And it was all day, and it was this whole book that, if you want to, you can read it. It was very interesting too, how we can have our, you know, our plan ahead of time, and also involve our community. And we need to prioritize our projects for 2017, '18. And also, it will be possible to adopt a two-year financial plan like other cities are doing it. And also, they talk about how much debt we have. I think we are in a very good shape comparing to other cities. And also, our Calpers Fund, and the same, comparing to other cities in California, I think we are doing very good. I think that's it about the workshop.
Thank you very much.
A whole day of finance. You could probably help glory out if you're bored.
No. I leave it to the experts.
Well, thank you for participating and representing us at those. All right, moving on to consent calendar, I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless any item needs to be pulled.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. There are no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to general government. Item number 10, consideration of providing direction to staff regarding the commercial design review process. Recommended action is to direct staff. Taking us through this item this evening will be Senior Planner Lundquist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
I'm pretty good. How about yourself?
Good, welcome back.
Good, thank you, members of the council. I'm here representing Lynn Goldberg tonight, as she could not be here. Vice Mayor Dunsford requested that this item be placed on the agenda on the August 1st meeting. As you may recall, the city council recently discussed the residential design review process. This process that we're going to discuss tonight is the non-residential design process. The Calistoga Municipal Code sets forward certain triggers for either administrative design review or planning commission's design review. A design review application would only go to city council if there was an appeal, or if one of the city council members pulled up the item subsequent to the planning commission's decision. The triggers vary. There are several different standards. They range from minor modifications to a non-residential property, or a less than 10 percent increase to floor area. There's also those provisions that trigger the planning commission's review, which is construction of new structures, additions of more than 10 percent of the gross floor area, or substantial exterior modifications to an existing structure. Design review, as the ordinance says, is not required for alterations that are not visible in the public right of way or accessible to the public as determined by the Planning and Building Director. The Planning and Building Director can also make a determination that the design review proposed does not warrant the planning commission's determination, even though it may be required for those code sections that I just mentioned. Attached to this staff report are those projects that staff in the planning commission has reviewed since May of 2014. As you can see, it's a pretty extensive list of projects. When we review a planning, an application for design review, we look at several different things. The primary source is our general plan guidelines. We look to the land use element and to the community identity element for design direction. We also work closely with the applicants as they proceed forward through this process. Many of the applications that you see listed here were changed or altered or modified through this process. The administrative process is generally done through the building permit review, where the applicant submits their plans to the Planning and Building Department, and they're reviewed by all agencies, including planning staff. If planning staff can agree that the application is in conformance with the general plan, we will sign off on it and let it proceed through the building permit review process. Generally, if the project requires planning commission approval, they will submit architectural drawings, the necessary design items. That process will go to the planning commission prior to the applicant submitting the building permit. So it is an extension of time, and it does create additional layer of review. With that said, this is just a presentation item, so I welcome any feedback that the city council would like to provide on this non-residential design review process. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And we will open this to the public if anyone's interested, but I will start by saying this is a presentation in general overview of the process. We are not at liberty to discuss any particular project by address. With that said, are there council members with any questions before I open this to the public?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraus, go for it.
I note that in the past, I don't think it's part of your presentation here, that for the issuance of certain building permits, there are required dimensions on that. But there has not been a requirement for a drawing to scale. Is that correct?
There is a requirement that the drawing be provided in order to represent what the project is being proposed. And you're right, the building permit review process is a more exact process with scaled dimensions, scaled plans. Typically, through the design review, the plans have not evolved to that level of detail. So the administrative design review process and the planning commission process can have a more fluid level of plans that are submitted to the Planning and Building Department.
Okay. Can you see an advantage to requiring any drawing that come into the planning department, or in conjunction with the building permit, that the exterior elevations be on the same scale and represent, represented to neighboring buildings?
In certain circumstances, sure. Not all, not all things require context with the adjoining properties.
Okay, and is that a wise process?
Well, I think in order to make flexibility in the process, it would be wise. You may have something that is minor in nature, you know, a single window replacement that is at a non-residential property that by definition requires design review. We wouldn't need to see that window in context with the adjoining property. But on the other hand, it may be a larger scope project where we might need to see the scale and shape and how it's relating to the neighboring properties, sure.
Okay. If something were to go in, during the current process, if there's something that gets moved from an administrative approval and is moved to a design review to the planning commission, is it at that point they'd be required to show scale, full-on measurements?
Yeah, again, it is somewhat dependent upon the size of the project.
Scope of the project, okay.
But yes, if it's a larger scope project, it would need scaled drawings.
Thank you.
Just to kind of expand a little bit on what Gary said and what you said, your quote was, "Not all things require context." So, it is fluid as the rest of the process is. It is your, yours and your department's call, whether it should go to planning commission or it can be done administratively. Is that correct?
That is, and then the code sets up those guidelines.
You have the guidelines, but again, it's, it's a big box and little stuff in the box.
Yes.
Can we require an architectural drawing to have the same scale and scope as the project it alleges to represent?
Sure.
And can we, can we change our way of doing things to do that on every?
Absolutely. The code, if you read further into the code, the code says that the applicant shall submit the information as deemed necessary by the Planning and Building Department. So we, on our, we have check lists that we hand out to applicants that illustrate what they need to do in order to submit for a design review application. That list can be modified to incorporate requirements for context.
So the architectural rendering would then match the schematic drawing in all instances if we put that requirement into our code?
Well, it wouldn't be a code in that particular case.
Or into our checklist.
Yes, the forms.
Well, let me ask another question. My roof is getting kind of old on my house, and I'd like to replace it with a roof that's going to last forever. And they make those. They're steel roofs. If I come in for a building permit to put a new roof on my house, what kind of review is there going to be by the, by the, by the planning department? Is it just, "Oh, it's a re-roof. Okay. Oh, it's a re-roof. What are you going to re-roof it with?
Did you mean to suggest?
Are you going to change the eaves?
Did you mean to suggest that you're a commercial building you're going to re-roof?
No, my home.
It's a different process about commercial.
Well, we're only talking about.
So, your commercial property that you have downtown?
My commercial property, let's say, needs to have a new roof on it. It's been leaking. And I come on in and say, "Need a permit. Put a new roof on it." Put a new roof on my business.
We would ask for the information that provide, illustrates in enough detail the design of it in order to increase our confidence in either approving it administratively or sending it to the planning commission. If we have enough information where we feel confident that it meets the objectives of the general plan and the other design review policies, then we.
Would your, would your requirement in the submittal be what kind of material you're going to use?
Of course. Yeah, we need to make sure that it has the appropriate Class A roofing material. We want to make sure that it, how it's going to look, if it's a front elevation, we want to make sure in context with the street and visually what it's going to appear as. So if you provided enough information to illustrate that, and again, we feel confident that it meets the design review objectives, approve it administratively.
Yeah, maybe I want to add a little bit more to the eaves and everything so that the sun doesn't shine directly into windows and stuff at certain times. Would that be something that you would be concerned with?
If it doesn't raise a substantial design consideration, then yes.
Do, are there different applications of the current commercial design review process relative to where the building is in town? So under the general plan designation, if it's in the light industrial zone versus downtown commercial versus historic downtown, et cetera?
Well, the industrial I would dismiss because everything that you do there requires a use permit, and we have a very limited amount of them. So let's, if we just focus on the two commercial districts that we have, which are the community commercial and the downtown commercial zoning districts, then yes, then those are the same processes. You know, as I pointed out in the code, if it's not visual from the public right of way, you know, that definitely increases our confidence. It's not going to have a substantial design concern. The more it becomes evident and predominant and it increases the visibility, we then are more sensitive to it. We want to make sure that it is designed according to our rural, small-town character, and that's probably subject to a lot of interpretation, what that character is. You know, our general plan doesn't take it to the nth degree where it identifies, like in some communities that have specific standards, where it has to be stucco, it has to be Missionist-style roof. Ours is a more general type of design guidelines. It really looks to how our community's grown through a more organic and free-flowing process, where we rely primarily on the architects and/or the designers to put forward a plan that they think embodies the property, and they make sure that it is not going to be intrusive upon neighbors. It's not going to be intrusive upon the general public. So we give, we give a lot of discretion to those designers, and that's at both levels, the planning commission and the city staff level. But again, back to your question, the process is the same, but we don't have very specific details that go into the design. Our, our general plan, just as it applies, is more general. And so, but that is our policy document, and that's the blueprint for the community.
Okay. Other council members?
Going back to Gary's commercial building. He wants to put a steel roof on it. Peak steel roof with slate shingles, so it absolutely can't burn. Would you have to know that? Would that be something that you would? If he didn't disclose it, and like he said, I want a new roof, and you say, okay, da-da-da, and bang, he gets approval, and he puts a steel roof on with slate shingles, which increases the load bearing on the wooden walls by 120% and could cause a subsequent collapse. Would that be something you would know about? Or would you ask?
For me personally, my review is concentrated on the planning and building, planning division. For the building division, yes. We would need to know structurally.
But this is a re-roof?
Yes. For a project, we would need to know the materials. We would need to know the specific structural components of it in order to make sure that it complied.
So you would ask if you're going to replace a wood roof, peaked wood roof with another peaked wood roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So Gary couldn't just put up his steel and walk away?
Well, if, if the steel.
If the, yeah.
If the steel didn't raise.
The question would be asked.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Other council members before?
Just a couple comments. I think it says here that items are subject to review, the following items are subject to review by the Planning and Building Director. Are you able to independently make decisions on what gets forwarded to Planning Commission or not? Or does it have to go, is it Lynn as the Planning and Building Director? Is she the one and only one that can make those decisions?
She, to be frank, we balance everything off of each other. We're in a small department, so we're very fortunate in doing that. I think what the code is indicating is that she or her designee can make that determination. In some circumstances, she has granted me the authority to do that. In other circumstances, she is the authority that makes those administrative design review decisions.
So I guess I would then pose that issue before the council for consideration going forward because the code is very clear that it's the Planning and Building Director that makes that final decision. If we were to follow the code, the Planning and Building Director would not be able to put that responsibility to somebody else or assign that responsibility, in my opinion, unless we decide to change that.
Usually those things, those kinds of requirements in there have a provision that says "or designee." So that if you have an interim.
Yeah.
If you have an acting.
I'm just saying it doesn't say that. So we might want to consider changing that. The other issue is, the issue that I have is, says, the following items are subject to review by the Planning Commission. And the third item is substantial exterior modifications to an existing structure. So going back to Gary's hypothetical, which is a re-roof, which to me is, it's your roofing, and you're re-roofing an existing roof. So you are not creating a substantial exterior modification. So certainly, there might be questions of the planning department on, well, what are you going to re-roof it with? If it's something substantially different. I'm not sure at what point that triggers something to go before Planning Commission, but clearly, if there is a substantial exterior modification, that needs to go before Planning Commission. And that becomes a subjective decision of what is substantial and not substantial. And you have the second item that says additions of more than 10% of the gross floor area to an existing structure. Well, let's just say you were to substantially modify something, but that substantial modification isn't necessarily floor area. So the fact that it's substantial, to me, even though it might not be technically floor area at the moment, perhaps in the future it could become floor area, but maybe not at the moment, the fact that it's substantial is the trigger for it going before Planning Commission. And the fact that that is subjective, to me, and it's subjective to one person making that decision, is where there's a problem. And I think that we need to somehow take that subjectivity out of the equation to a degree because, which really just means you have to have a couple more sets of eyes making that decision so that you are confident that the majority would support the fact of whether or not something is substantial or not substantial. And then that would then trigger whether or not something goes before design review or not.
One of the challenges that we do have, and I don't disagree at all, I think putting that particular burden at times on one individual in a small department can be a challenge. One of the, the opposite effects of that is then do we get to a situation where everything goes through to the planning commission? And you remove that, kind of that, that ability to administratively approve items? With that said, though, I would say it, we are a small department, but it can't hurt to have at least, it require two people to review it and sign off on it. Or if at the end of the day, as our policy is written today, the director has to sign off on it, then if the director's case or the senior planner's case, there isn't a reason that the two of them, that I could foresee, wouldn't be able to at least put some eyes on it and move it along from that point.
I can agree with what you're saying there, but again, because you have a small department, and there could be turnover at the department, and you might only have one of those two positions available for a period of time. So, you know, while it would be good to have two sets of eyes on it, like you say, to make it a requirement, we may be handcuffing ourselves.
And/or the city manager. Just somehow, there's a way around that.
We could, we could burden him with it because he, you know, hardly does anything.
My only concern is if we swing this too far, somewhere between where we are today, and I will say that our current process or ordinance gives a lot of leeway. There aren't, the boundaries are pretty far out there. And there are certainly benefits to that. Somewhere between where we are today and where some other communities are that we know of, where the boundaries are very, very tight, right down to, you know, what color and what shape the wood is going to be. Somewhere, there is a happy median. And that what I would not like to see is a situation where we go too far in that direction and we end up with everything going before the planning commission. Because let's remember, it's not as simple as if something gets bounced to Planning Commission, there are actual costs, both in real dollars and then the time, which results in real dollars, to anyone having a project come. As soon as you go to the Planning Commission, the clock starts, the meter starts running, and there is real money involved. So my concern is that while there are some projects where real money should be involved, I would hate to see us go to the extent where now every little thing you come into, I mean, when you look at, in 24 months, we've had 24 projects come through. That's not a lot of volume. And out of those 24 projects, there's potentially a project that, on the commercial side, where we've had a concern. So I think on the correction side or refined process side, if there's somewhere, you know, sticking with what the vice mayor is suggesting, hey, it's the planning director responsible, but it should be, you know, some of the two sets of eyes or two sign-offs in the planning department or city manager if there aren't two people there because of whatever the case may be. So just a thought there.
Okay, or it could be, because I'm, I'm not suggesting that it would actually be staff necessarily. It could be, again, what's the, the decision that is being made is the determination of whether or not something is considered substantial. And, and whether it's, if, if a design review process is warranted, that's the decision this new body would make. And it could be very informal in the sense that an application's received by planning department, the planning department then emails the application to, let's just say it's maybe two members of the planning commission and one member of the city council, or one member of the planning commission and two members of the city council just for verification, or, you know, does this meet the criteria for design review?
I think if you start mixing the city council and the planning, you know, even, you know, something like that, I think you're.
So maybe it's, okay, so it's, say, let's just say it's two members of Planning Commission, and they're making a determination on whether or not this particular plan, and again, we're talking about those that are deemed, it's, the question is whether or not they're substantial enough and whether or not they warrant design review. It's a yes or no. And, and if it's a yes, most of those applications are already going to be going to Planning Commission anyways. We're talking about a handful that are perhaps questionable to prevent.
We have informally done that in the past. We have reached out to the Planning Commission and asked them. In doing so, it, it does put a lot of responsibility on that one particular planning commissioner. In years past, it'd been the chair. In more recent history, we've tried to select those that have more experience in, in design-related issues. But it, it's, it is concerning to the Planning Commission on, on making those determinations.
So in the past, without referencing specifics, a commissioner was asked to provide opinions, and those opinions were not incorporated to the decision-making. They were disregarded. And an application was approved. So that, again, you're putting that responsibility on one commissioner, which, again, I think that's too much responsibility for one person. And two, those opinions that were provided were actually not implemented. Or those opinions did not raise a flag to then defer the application to design review. Which, one of those two things should have happened. One is, the opinions of the commissioner should have been incorporated into the decision. Or two, it should have raised a flag that the, that this should have be deferred to the Planning Commission for design review. That is what we need to fix.
Can I say something?
Please.
One of the things that I will recommend is that to have all the details reviewed when we get an application for any, any type of, a project. Because we can get just the front, you know, just the front page, say, we're going to do this and this, and we have measurements there, but they are not specific about the back or, you know, on the rest of the project. So I think we had to ask the applicant to provide with all the details, not just the front or, you know.
I would totally agree with you. And I would like to follow up on the question that Councilmember Kraus raised about designs being required to be submitted to scale. It baffles me that that's even up for question. It would seem to me that any application that requires any elevation absolutely must be drawn to scale. So I'm having trouble understanding why that isn't so and why that would potentially be a problem. And not only should it be drawn to scale, but if it's something that is considered substantial, it absolutely should show each side of the elevation. You know, the back, the sides, the front. Because again, we're making decisions that affect the, the overall design of the building and how it fits within the community character.
The challenge is that the word, as it's written here, is the word substantial is very subjective. So you don't trigger design review or you don't trigger true elevations and scale unless somebody reviewing that or making that decision determines it to be substantial. We have very broad borders on what that means. I don't, I wouldn't suggest that we get to a situation where every project that comes forward from a commercial endeavor is now going to require that project to have to go out and get. is now going to require that project to have to go out and get architecturally certified scale drawings. Because that's going to put a very expensive burden on people for something that could be very simple, you know, you've got, how many that went to, the vast majority of projects went through administrative approval that it didn't cost them, you know, a significant amount of money to do it. What we, what I hear we're looking for is some way to minimize or neutralize or share the burden of who determines or how it's determined whether something's substantial. Because that is what triggers just about everything. So what I would propose, and we'll open this to the public in a minute, is I would propose maybe it's a matter of we're forcing there to be the requirement that two sets of eyes have to review every application that comes in. And if it's the, you know, the planning director and the senior planner, or it's the senior planner and the city manager, if those two, or whichever variation it is, determines it not to be quote substantial, then it moves on for administrative approval. I would agree, having, burdening one person with that, the vast majority of times, clearly it works. There are situations where that is not the case. What I would hate to see us become, and we need to be careful, is there's a community south of us that has a very stringent process that it'll take you three times as long to complete a project than it does to do so, the same project in Calistoga. So, again, somewhere between the two, there's a balance, and I just want to make sure...
I'm just saying it has, I strongly think it needs to be at least two members of the planning commission. It's not two staff members. Because that's already, as Eric stated, you know, between him and the director, you know, they're making the decisions, I think probably more often than not, they're probably making decisions together already. But it's, I don't think that's enough. I think that...
So as an analogy, every time our city manager makes a decision, should two council members review that decision? It's the same structure, it's the exact same structure?
Well, this is a very focused, specific task, which is to determine whether or not something warrants design review. And the point of that is to, number one, to try to help facilitate and expedite projects so that they don't have to go before design review. And two, if they clearly show some sort of a substantial modification that warrants design review, then...
I mean, that's where you...
They go forward.
You get to a judgment call.
Can I say something, please?
Please.
I think we have three distinct lines of command authority here. You have five of us that are elected, you have five planning commissioners that are appointed, and you have two planning people, maybe three, that are hired. I don't think you ought to mix up their functions. But the planners, you and Lynn, do that. The planning commission, who are appointed by us, do their job. I don't think you ought to mingle them. I don't think you ought to get those opinions. I disagree with your view on that, Michael.
So just...
I just don't think we ought to be crossing those lines. We have three distinct ways of going about it, and you've got 24 items here. We have one potential under some minor problem in four years. That's a pretty good hit ratio in my estimation. And I think we take away the authority, we take away the sense of, this is my job, you hired me to do it, I'm a professional. Never want to take that away from them.
So the other thing you could do is you could try to become more specific in defining what is substantial. Like, you could make the argument that what's there...
That I could agree with, yes.
Is too vague.
That might be a little bit too broad.
Maybe we need to be more specific, and that would just solve the issue. I'm not wanting to make things more cumbersome. I do think we've had an epic fail recently that we need to fix. And if you recall in the past, we had planning commission, we had a design review board, and I'm not suggesting that we go back to that.
Go ahead.
Because I want to keep things moving along efficiently, because I understand, you know, business owners and contractors, and they don't want to be bogged down in the minutia of stuff that can be dealt with at the counter. And so I support that. But I'm just trying to somehow prevent what happened from happening in the future, that's all. And I think that we can find a solution.
Yeah, if we can figure out what substantial actually means and how to control it.
And somewhere there are, between where we are, as I mentioned, in other communities, there's some language that could be borrowed. Unless there's a compelling comment to be made by council, I do want to open this to the public, because I know some people are here. All right, is there anyone in the public that'd like to address this matter? Yes, sir. Please approach the podium. Should you so choose, share with us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Paul Noblick, and I live at 1019 Cedar Street. As an active person and a business person, it seems that my day is consumed with a lot of things that are urgent, but not important. When really, I should be dealing with things that are truly important rather than just the urgencies. This morning, we heard something that was shocking and important. And the issue that you've been discussing today is not urgent, and it's not shocking, but it is really important. It's really important for Calistoga's long-term sustainability that we preserve the historic, authentic nature, the architectural integrity of our downtown. I trust that you received the letter that I had written, so I don't have to elaborate on that, except I would ask you to address it one more time, and I'd like to then, I mean, for you to review that one more time. I'd like to offer two different perspectives. I am so wholeheartedly in agreement with you, Mr. Mayor, that we don't want to have a system that gets bogged down and bureaucratic. And I find that when government makes laws, it basically makes laws for two reasons. One is to protect those that are vulnerable and weak, and the other is to deal with those people who misbehave. And unfortunately, the people who misbehave, we spend a lot of time trying to design a structure to just deal with them, and it affects everyone else negatively. In this situation, I think we've had an applicant who has tried to skirt the system and has been deceptive, and I think it's on paper, and we should deal with that. So please, don't let this one slide by, because it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for not identifying the address which you are referring to. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this matter? If only there were any contractors in the room that might have an opinion on this. All right, we're going to close the oral communication, our public comment, and bring it back to the council for further discussion.
Just one other, as we're kind of thinking this through, and I think staff ultimately just needs to come back with something, but, you know, what we have here is the second bullet point, additions of more than 10% of the gross floor area to an existing structure. And I think, you know, what happened in a previous recent incident was that it was not considered floor area, but it certainly was a 10% increase of the building itself. So, you know, maybe there's a way to, and I, you know, to make that more specific, just a comment there.
Okay, other council members, this is for direction, not for action.
I think that we should have, to kind of tighten things down a little bit, is that we should have language that says something to the effect that any architectural rendering submitted shall, the finished product shall substantially conform with the rendering submitted. In that manner, if someone puts up a, makes a modification to a building, and although the dimensions are correct, the drawing of the finished product is nothing like it. I mean, it's a building, it's got a roof on it. In that respect, I suppose the drawing conforms to the finished product, but somewhere in there, when you submit a really nice drawing, finished product should look like that, you know. I think that's what it comes down to. What, you know, when I start talking about things in scale to one building to another building kind of a thing, I think that's part of it. But on the other hand, I don't want someone to say, well, gee whiz, I think I'd like to put some flower boxes under the windows, and someone say, well, gee whiz, it's got to go to the planning commission because you're altering the exterior. And then someone in the planning commission, this is a joke, says you can plant marigolds but not petunias because it's going to clash with the other, you know. And I've seen arguments over what shade of white fence should be.
Well, you've seen that.
So...
None of us want to go there, Gary.
Yeah, yeah. So I do trust the planning department. I agree with the mayor that, and with Jim, that they're doing a great job. We have an outlier there that got through the system, and...
Let's tweak the system a little to prevent the next outlier.
Yeah.
And I think, I think if we require plans to be drawn to scale, I mean, that is, I mean, it's just a no-brainer. And I don't think it's really a cost issue. To draw plans to scale, a simple architectural rendering, contractors have their own ability to do that.
They do that under that CAD program.
CAD programs and all that. I mean, that should be absolute. I mean, because the person making the decision on whether something is, has a substantial exterior modification, how do you make that determination if it's not drawn to scale?
Yeah, this looks good, but this is what we got.
Yeah, it's...
I agree.
I would caution that if you're going to require a two-scale drawing on every project that comes to you, you are impacting on a financial basis every project you bring forward. Because nobody is going to just, it's going to have to be a certi, if it's going to be required to be a scale, it has to be a certified drawing, which means you need an architect's stamp.
But there could be something that triggers the architectural drawing. So, for example, if you're adding flower boxes, you know, you don't have to go draw the building.
So you're going to get into a list of 1,000 items that trigger and don't?
No, it's all about substantial, it's massing, it's substantial, you're changing something that's, again, and it says 10%, you know, which, anything more than 10% is really, that's, that is what's defining substantial. But my point is that it's saying gross floor area, and we had a loophole that happened recently where something was built and classified as something that it really, it massively, it increased the massing significantly more than 10%. So if you clean up that language, it might, so anything over 10% would require an architectural rendering to scale. I mean, something to that effect.
So if we can just, on that recommendation, assuming the council has consensus, recommend to staff to go to other best practices from other cities and see what language they have similar to that, and what might be applicable to convey the message.
Regarding massing.
Correct. Or what triggers, or if they define substantial, something of that nature. I would also recommend, my opinion, looking for language in other, from other municipalities that indicate that internal administrative review process, that at least two eyes, sets of eyes are on that. And again, whether it's two people from the planning department, or if it's one person from the planning and there's nobody else in planning, so it's the city manager. But this way, it's not one individual making a determination of what's substantial or what triggers the benchmark for it to move. Other suggestions for them to bring back? I think we also, clarification, Dylan, go ahead.
Yeah, one clarification. So normally in the process, when we do any kind of code amendment, we, like this with a zoning, that is zoning related, we go back to planning commission, we also meet with the commission, we ask for their input, and then the final draft comes back to city council as well for review after the commission has taken a vote on it and provided their input. So at this point, you know, certainly, I think we've had some great feedback, some great dialogue. We've received not only Mr. Noblick's letter, but a few other letters that we can take into consideration. I think staff has heard you loud and clear, there's a lot of things that we want to look into. I think the next question is, would you like to see the staff come back with, here's where we're at, here's what we're looking at? Or would you like us to take that information to your planning commission, discuss that with them, ask them what they feel defines a substantial modification, and then bring back a draft later on after it's, you know, gone through that kind of process, public hearings, and then now you're seeing something that's, you know, been discussed, talked about. Really, it's whatever's your preference.
I would prefer to see the planning commission involved. That way, you get all three groups, us, them, and the planning commission, different ways of looking at the same problem for different reasons. I think, I think they would be slighted if they weren't asked to.
I would recommend it goes to them for recommendations, suggestions. They're an advisory commission. Everyone cool, comfortable with that?
Yeah, I certainly think that's the wise course of action. I think that the commission will understand that the council has some serious concerns about this, and that we want to see some modification, some appropriate modification to this, to the system. And the ball is in their court to come back with us with the suggestions of what we should adopt.
And to Mr. Noblick's comments, I would add, this is government in action. This is what we are supposed to be doing. Thank you for reminding us of that, Paul. This is how it should work. Everybody working together to solve a common problem.
I have one other comment, and that is the issue regarding the estimate that is on the permit, where the applicant puts in a number of what he deems to be the estimate of the cost of the project. And my understanding is that the cost of the permit is related to the estimate that's provided. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That's the standard. We do review all of the valuations provided and make sure that they're a good estimate of what the time and materials would cost.
You do that after the fact?
We do, we do that after they provide it upon submission of the building permit application. The true nature of that is to make sure that we are recovering the service that's provided, recovering the plan check costs and recovering the building inspection services. Often, a project can be valued at much, much more, and because that is, it has not a lot of services provided, not a lot of inspections. And so we have some flexibility in how that's applied in order to make sure that we're not just making money, because that's not the way the system is set up. We're only intended to recover the costs. And so sometimes that valuation is pulled down in order to make sure that it's more in line with the actual services provided. And sometimes it's increased to make sure that, because it's a more complex project, more inspections are going to be required, more agencies are involved, that we're recovering those costs as well. So it can, it can go both ways.
Is that auditable?
In what terms?
If I put down $10,000 on my building permit and I actually spend 50, come back at the end of the project and say, whoa, you didn't do that for 10.
Yes, yes. And if we're starting to accrue more time spent, then we will have them readjust that through a modified building permit.
And charge them appropriately.
That's correct.
And do you request copies of invoices or receipts, or...
Sometimes we do. We get challenged sometimes on what we think is the valuation. Often, it's when we increase it. The applicants will then provide us documentation as to what the true and real costs were during and through that process.
All right. To, everyone's okay with that? Staff, you feel comfortable?
Yes.
Okay. City manager Fico would just recommend that when you bring this back for, to the planning commission for discussion, this is a general ordinance overview. This is not project-specific. Okay? And Eric, I think you've heard a few of us say, overall, I think you're... And Eric, I think you've heard a few of us say, overall, I think your department does a great job, but once in a while, there are differences of opinion on certain things. There certainly is never a difference of opinion about decisions we make from the general public, so we have no idea what that's about.
Thank you for that. I understand the nature of the design review, so I get it, and thank you for your feedback.
Thank you very much. So we'll see, send that through the Planning Commission process, and we'll go to a future date. I'm going to invoke some executive privilege for a brief moment and revisit a previous agenda item, now that we have some representatives here from the Calistoga Parlor Number 145, the Native Daughters of the Golden West. Welcome, ladies, if you'd like to come up to the podium. We have read your proclamation, I'm happily going to bring it to you, but I didn't know if you have any words you wanted to share with the community and the vast studio audience at home.
Just a thank you, yes. Mayor Canning and council members, I am Camille Hurling, a rancher of Calistoga, and the current president of the Native Daughters of the Golden West, Calistoga Parlor 145. We want to thank you for the nice recognition and proclamation. This will be our fourth raising of the flag. We are proud that this has become a tradition on September 9th, to fly the Native Daughters of the Golden West flag in observance of California Admission Day. Again, thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you for that, all that you and the parlor does for the local community, as well as the state of California.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kim, did you want a picture of that? Yes?
Come on back. They weren't bad.
Moving on to item number 11, consideration of a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments to open positions on various committees. They have recommended actions to adopt the resolution as presented. I will take this one, Kathy, unless you had some homework prepared in advance. The following applicants were submitted for opening remainder on the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. We have John Gleiser and Sophie Gullon, right? Did I get that right? Neither of whom are here, nor are they required to be. And then on the Napa County Local Food Advisory Council, we have Paul Holm, who is not here and again, not required to be. So, council members, I present these names for your discussion, or we'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford, all those in favor?
Aye.
And please, Kathy, thank them for our service.
So which of the two who are running for the A-TAC committee, would you like to...
Oh, only one of the two.
Only one of the two.
I completely misunderstood that.
It's a two-year term, that's where the two gets confusing, but it's only one position.
Oh.
I missed that as well.
All right. There's not room for two on there, huh?
There will be in January, but this is just for David's position.
If it's a help, Mr. Mayor, I know Sophie Gullon, and she is interested, I spoke with her on other occasions about municipal concerns that she's had, and I know that she has Calistoga in her heart, and I know that she is interested in becoming more involved. I can't say that I know John Gleiser, but...
Got it.
I, too, have had some interaction with Sophie, in fact, she sought me out, asked me how to apply, and so I told her to go see Kathy. And again, I don't know Mr. Gleiser either. But Sophie appears to be very willing and able to be involved in the community. I know she is applying to be a docent at the Sharpstein Museum as well, and helped out there the other night, so I would give her high marks.
Not that Mr. Gleiser isn't enthusiastically interested either.
I don't know him.
All right. So with that said, we do have an opening coming in January, there will be a vacancy. So I will re-pitch this to place, so for your consideration, Sophie Gulling as the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, and obviously Paul Holm as the Local Food Advisory Council, with our strong encouragement that Mr. Gleiser re-appeals, and we'll keep him on file for January.
Correct, and I will write him a letter, let him know what the decision was, and hopefully he'll stay interested then, till then.
Okay, with that said, I will motion as stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Councilmember Kraus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to rescind the first resolution, since we made a change?
I'll make it a, I will, go ahead.
I did.
You did, okay.
Okay.
Rescinded first, replaced with second. Thank you very much, my apologies. No other items on the agenda, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, September 19. Thank you all for your patience. I've been stopped by the city manager, please, city manager, I know where you're going with this.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, we had a birthday, so instead of doing any kind of funky celebration, I brought some cake, and so please wish Mr. Dunsford a happy birthday while you grab some cake on your way home.
The vice mayor had a birthday? Well, in that case, happy birthday, vice mayor.
Aren't the beers on the guy that...
Yeah, the cake in the back is free, was not bought with tax dollars. Thank you, and we'll adjourn to the next meeting.
Happy birthday, Michael.